We have a quorum, so we're gonna go. Everybody ready? Alright, so we're gonna call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional Schools Committee. We are gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would all rise if you care to and say your prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, next on the agenda is citizens' comments, and we have one. Please come right to the table. Just state your name for us.
Sure, sure. I'm Linda Halfley. I'm Stowe. I'm a Stow Town Clerk. And many of you received an email from me today about the use of center school on Election Day. And I just wanted to, I know Kirk has offered to meet personally with me to discuss some of the issues, but I wanted to get it into the public realm to understand that it is a significant issue on Election Day when there are activities at the school. And it's, it's an issue, as Ross knows, that I deal with every election year and with every new superintendent and with a school committee. And I don't think any of you have been on the school committee in, or maybe have in 2020. Of course, that was, everything was done with COVID. But prior to that, I think I actually started asking all three clerks in the district, two of us through schools now, asking for this November elections to be nothing in the schools since 2004. And most of the time, the superintendents and the school committees understood that reasoning because I have 5,400 registered voters that are apt to come. Granted, I gave you some stats today, about half of them, I think, will come in person. And anyway, I just wanted to get that out there so that you, and I would hope that maybe you will consider changing the date or changing the conferences. And also, Monday, this Bolton Clerk had notified everybody about we finally learned when the state primary will be, which is September 3rd. And I know, you know, the calendar had been set, but I noticed there's a blank line in there so that it could certainly fit in for some other kind of no-school activity or something on that day. And we did that, I believe you've done it in 2022, because that was also the day after Labor Day. And we, of course, in March 5th, we have the presidential primary and the school is closed. And you'd already, you know, have agreed to do it on these other occasions. And I would hope that you would continue it for future. So, that was my comment. Glad to take any questions. You're welcome to email me separately or contact me at the office.
Yeah, so we will definitely do that. And actually, it's not usually our practice to respond to public comment, but I think I, in my email to all of you, I said we can put it in the parking lot and find a way to discuss it.
Say that again?
Find a way to discuss it in the, in an upcoming meeting.
Sure, sure. Yeah, it was kind of confusing with your agenda. I don't say that there were, you know, it's the review of future calendar dates. This is a future date on your calendar. Alright, thank you.
Alright, everybody, so next on our agenda, I don't think we have any other public comment. No, we do not. We're gonna move to executive session, and I'll look for a motion from my vice chair. Sure. Pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 2182, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, in this case, superintendent of schools. I move to enter into executive session at 6:06 PM. And the committee will return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. And I will second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, we'll call though, sorry. Myself. Yes, Amy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy Dussel?
Scott?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Hi, everybody. We'll just wait for her.
Here, okay.
Alright, everybody, we're gonna head back into the regular session of the Neshoba Regional Hall of Schools Committee meeting. And the next item on, we have nothing to share about executive session, FYI. So, the consent agenda is the next item, and I'll ask for a motion.
I move to a per consent agenda of December 13th, 2023, contained draft meeting minutes of November 29th, 2023.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, everybody. To the school committee chairperson update, I have used this to earmark for a conversation around future school committee, council, school committee meeting updates. Alina, would you be able to pull up the planning calendar? So, there was some question mark around when our meetings in January will be. Those, I think we have just solidified, we will keep the original dates as discussed. We will meet on January 3rd in person, and then we will meet on January 17th remote. January 17th will have a couple of unfinished business items that we will take votes on, but for the most part, it will be occupied by the budget workshop. Then, Kirk, can you speak to the first February meeting and what you prefer on that date?
Yeah, I think for, for the budget process and to have an opportunity to kind of learn when figures come in and when we get them, they typically get all the state aid numbers right around the February 1st date. If you guys remember last year, it was super late because we had a change at the governor's office, so they get an extra month to build their budget. But by shifting it to February 7th, then we won't have the four-week lag between January 17th and February 14th.
So, if there is no objection, I would like to make the first February meeting on February 7th. Okay, seeing no objection.
Something remote?
It will be in the school committee conference room on February 7th. And then the second meeting in February on the 28th after vacation will be remote. And then Alina, if you can scroll one more time to the March date. March, we are putting on the agenda, or rather, we are putting on the calendar, a potential 3rd March meeting. We are unsure if this will be needed, but because it is budget season, we want to provide enough flexibility. So, if you are the type to keep this sort of thing in a calendar somewhere, please note that March 6th might be a required meeting. It will be remote because it's an additional meeting. If it's not necessary, we will gladly take it off the list.
Yeah. This is a result of, as you know, we need to present our budget by March 15th to our towns. And as we track that state aid and those funding sources come in, we anticipate we'll be able to have a budget hearing potentially on February 28th. But in the event that we need not, that we can't do it on the 28th, we have March 6th then to do the budget hearing so that after the budget hearing, there's time for a vote on March 13th, which moves us to the towns by March 15th.
Alright, so.
So, it's a safety net.
Yeah. There's nothing more on that? Alright, keep moving. Thanks, Alina. Next item, guys, is our student representative report. I do not see Hanse.
I don't have a report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll just keep going, and we are quite sure that Hanse and Eva are busy doing important things. So, we'll see them next time. And now we'll go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate that. And thank you to everyone here at the committee. I'll be quick with my announcements so we can get to the meet, to tonight's meeting. I want to thank Vice Chair Cohen for joining me at Neshoba Regional High School last Friday. Senator Robin Kennedy of the 1st Worcester District and Representative Megan Kilcoyne of the 12th Worcester District came and joined us for a presentation at the high school, mature the schools. It went really well. And can't thank our high school educators enough for allowing us to visit their classrooms. And I think we all agree, Ms. Cohen, that the highlight of the program was the visit, was the EMT students had a chance to present on the EMT program. And we were joined by both Hanse and Eva as well. So, and then we did make an announcement, and that press release was sent out. The next piece is just further detail on our search for the Director of Student Services. It is posted. We have it out in several posting sites, include, you know, including school spring, which we feed into. And so, there's an invitation to apply and a job description in there. The information, the job description, there were some adjustments based on some feedback that we received, but also for the scope of the work as well. So, I'll continue to update the committee as we move forward in that process. It will, the committee committee to know that when we get to our panel interviews, there will be a representative group of people, educators, leaders, parents. We've engaged with our CPAC to solicit the parent representatives that will be coming forward then. And then they'll have, the final candidates will have a chance to engage with the committee as well. So, on that note, I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Friend to talk about some updates on our strategy work.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. The first update is relative to a grant that we have most recently received from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I'm excited to share that the Neshoba Regional School District has been awarded a grant in the amount of $7,983 from the deeper learning implementation from Kaleidoscope Collective for learning at DESI. Kaleidoscope is a program that was developed by DESI in 2019 to help schools strengthen their practices to deepen learning for all students. Neshoba Regional High School is proud to be the participating school in this initiative and will be the focus of our efforts. We have a strong team on board, including Dr. Kate Boynton, Assistant Principal Jeanne Boulay, representatives from our social studies, science, and ELA departments, including department heads, teaching and learning, and myself. So, while we're excited about the grant funding, we are even more excited about becoming a part of the Kaleidoscope Collective, which is going to provide us with access to deep and personalized professional learning. Learning that includes cohort learning with other districts, learning walks with instructional experts from DESI Kaleidoscope, instructional routines, unit unpacking, looking at student work protocols, examples, resources, and the evaluation of our outcomes. Specific activities include a launch meeting, which we had this past Monday, quarterly convenings, learning walks and grant support, which include participating in a self-assessment, three learning walks with members of the Kaleidoscope team and our Neshoba team, the first one being scheduled for January 10th, and a crosswalk with other existing initiatives and school priorities we have here at Neshoba. And then finally, progress monitoring and assessment of our efforts at the end of the year. This opportunity truly aligns with our district's ongoing curriculum and instructional initiatives and the work specifically we have in support of our high school. We and I look forward to keeping the committee updated as we work through the school year. That's the first update. Should I move on to the second one?
Okay.
Moving on to our 9 through 12 science curriculum review. And that update, as we have shared with the committee, we are currently in Phase 1 of the curriculum review cycle in three domains this year. 9 through 12 science, K through 5 literacy, and we're pleased to have some of our representatives from our K-5 team here to share an update with you on that realm, and K to 12 music. You will hear from our K-5 team in a bit and hear that they are actually going to recommend and have moved on to Phase 2 of the process, and they will share that progress with you. Our high school and music areas will be in Phase 1 for the remainder of this school year. So, I thought it would be important to provide you an update of where we are with our high school curriculum review, again, as a means of a quick update. As a reminder, Phase 1 is centered around two essential questions. What is our instructional vision for our students? And how well do our current teaching methods support student learning alongside our curriculum resources? In this phase, we are developing an instructional vision that aligns with our portrait of Neshoba graduate competencies. We're gathering data to assess our current science curriculum and its impact on student learning. We're evaluating the role of instructional technology and considering new core curriculum materials. And for the high schools specifically, we are also considering the course offerings and course sequencing for our science programming. Candice McBrady, our Math and Science Curriculum Director, has been working alongside our high school department head, Linda Peer, as well as the high school science department at large. During last Friday's early release, the department worked on finalizing the initial draft of an instructional vision and determining the most effective method for gathering feedback from families in the form of a survey, which will be distributed in January. This is our immediate next step. In parallel, the department is reviewing current curricular materials and piloting interactive resources like visible bodies, which they're piloting in AP Biology, as well as exploring new teaching tools and strategies and visiting our middle school science classrooms, which, as the committee is aware, is implementing high-quality instructional materials in the form of open site.
That will conclude our report.
Fantastic. What questions do we have about the superintendent's report? I just have one quick question for you. I think that you said that the DESI grant Kaleidoscope were put into a cohort. Do you know who we're with? Because I'm noticing, like, there was a pilot cohort, there's been cohort 1. Are we cohort 2?
3.
3, yeah. Do you know who we're with?
Yes. Medway, this one district. They had a large representation. That's who we were partnered with in our breakout groups on Monday.
Interesting.
Yeah.
And those are the ones who you'll do, be doing visits to their schools, et cetera?
We're gonna, we're gonna start with visits within Neshoba with the Kaleidoscope team. So, they're coming onsite on January 10th and doing learning walks with our high school department chairs, representative team of our high school teachers, Dr. Boynton, Assistant Principal Jeanne Boulay, myself, and members from the Department of Teaching.
And will that cover, like, all, like, all levels? They'll be visiting all levels of science level?
We're gonna start with those departments, those departments.
No, I mean, in science, it'll, it'll cover, like, CP all through AP?
We're gonna, we're gonna make a plan. You know, of course, all plans evolve, but that's the intention. One of the, the root efforts of Kaleidoscope is equity in ensuring that all students have mastery, identity, and creativity in their learning experiences in the classroom. So, it's important that we have a broad scope in those early walks.
That's awesome.
We're, we're most excited, as Superintendent Downing knows, that we are engaged with Kaleidoscope. We're excited about the grant, but we're more excited about this opportunity to partnership with the collective, which has great resources and tools.
Huge potential to go out in a few other buildings or other districts do. Yeah, Mike?
I'm wondering to what extent does the new school building and the new facilities being developed influence the science curriculum review and then maybe reconsideration of what can what can be taught in terms of a future vision of the curriculum? I mean, it's nice that the curriculum review is happening at the same time that the school is being built, but the plans have already been established, so I wonder how those intersect with one another.
I think that's, that's interwoven into the instructional vision, which I'll be pleased to share with the committee once it's defined and after we get feedback from our families, too. But the intention is that's our goal, is that's what we're working towards in the future, not our current state and all that we're doing.
I'll add that the extensive hundreds of paper, pages of submission to the MSBA on the educational program, it's, it's laid out in there as well in terms of the future instructional best practices and these weave together with that.
Awesome. So exciting. Thanks, guys. Alright, on to new business. And we are going to begin with Mr. Scott Blanchard's entry plan, and I will allow Kirk to queue him up.
Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce Principal Scott Blanchard of Mary Rollinson Elementary School. For those committee members that are new to what an entry plan and a process is, I'll just give a brief introduction. Whenever we have a, a new initiator come into the district that's leading the school or one of our major departments, we have them go through an entry process, which is an objective process, kind of learn about the organization and be able to identify what's important within that organization, learn about all those important things from archived documents, those types of things, so they can begin to set forward, gosh, what do I see? Tonight is simply, Mr. Blanchard's gonna be explaining to you the activities which he has already undergone and will, will continue to go, but will come back later in May to actually present findings on this entry work. And with that introduction, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Blanchard, Principal Blanchard, for assurance.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Thank you to the school committee for having me here tonight and giving me the opportunity to talk with you about my entry plan. I would like to thank Superintendent Downing and Assistant Superintendent Friend for all the support they've given me in my first few months as Principal of Mary Rollinson. I'd like to thank also Principal O'Shea, who was Principal of Mary Rollinson for many years before I got there and really laid a strong foundation for the work that we're doing and, you know, just making an amazing place to be and what really drew me to the town of Lancaster when I moved here from New Mexico so many years ago. And also, I'd like to thank Steve Grant, my Assistant Principal, who's here tonight in support of me. Thanks for being here, Steve. So, my entry plan really centers around a series of questions, particularly related to what are our strengths as a school that we can leverage for continued improvement? What are the areas of need that require our attention? What are the, the current systems and practices that we have in place that support the strategic plan? What is the impact of those on our school? And what are some areas of improvement that we can engage in related to that? And then, really, in a bigger sense, how can I best serve the MRE community, families, students, staff, and the town of Lancaster? The work that I'm doing with this, if you look in the plan of the timeline, it began last spring. I started by, when I learned that I was going to be the new principal, I started off by setting up meetings with all staff members to get a sense of where they felt what our strengths are, what our areas of need were, and how I might best support them. I was happy to say that I was able to speak to 90% of the staff by the end of the school year last year. That work continued over the summer in putting together, looking at data and putting together the state of the, the MRE State of the Union presentation that I gave at the retreat that we did in August. I'm continuing that work currently. The latest thing that I'm doing is I'm visiting all the classrooms to do listening sessions with students. I have one more classroom to go, and then I will be in every single classroom in the building. And those are going really well. The students have a lot of great ideas to share with me about, look, about what our strengths are and also about some things that we can do to make our school even better than it is. And I recognize, being at Mary Rollinson for eight years prior to becoming principal, you know, and being a member of the community, a father of two girls that go to the school, so I have a lot of connections to the town and, and the school. And through this process, I'm trying to look at the school through an objective lens. Alright, because I don't want to take anything for granted. I don't want to make any assumptions about what it is that we need and what our best path is going forward. And so, really, the entry plan centers around guiding me through that process. And so, I'm looking at a lot of data and documents and talking to a lot of people and gathering all these answers to these questions. And I look forward to coming back in May and talking with you about my findings.
Fantastic. We wish you very good, and we thank you very much for your service. Any questions before Mr. Blanchard, please? Alright, good.
Continue on to the business?
Yes, indeed. We are heading over to the K-5 Literacy Curriculum Review presentation.
I think I would give an absolute speech introduction to this group. I am going to look over to Assistant Superintendent Friend to introduce this fabulous group of educators that is working on our organization. Assistant Superintendent Friend, please.
Thank you to our teachers for being here after a very full day. And a full afternoon, too. Thank you. I'm excited to introduce a presentation from our dedicated team of educators on the K-5 ELA Literacy Curriculum Review led by our curriculum director, Laura Pagington, who truly has been tireless in her efforts working with other districts, collaborating with other districts on their process, what's worked, and getting feedback from them, as well as being a participant in DESI's Implement Network and working with our K-5 ELA Curriculum Committee, which is comprised of 23 individuals, of which, let's see, four are sitting here at the table and then also joined by other members as well. So, alongside Laura Pagington, I'd like to introduce Julie Labby. She's one of our instructional coaches in Stowe. Paige Naiset, who is our special educator at Mary Rollinson. Kate Narita, who is a 4th grade educator in Stowe. Principal Zablick.
I'm still.
Also joining us is Scott Blanch- Also joining us is Scott Blanchard, who's also on the committee, and Mr. Bates is also on the committee. And our other two instructional coaches for literacy, Liz West, who is at Ford Sawyer School, and Jen Shifely, who is at the Mary Rollinson Elementary School. The team's been diligently working through Phase One of the curriculum review process and are here to provide you with a high-level overview and update of the work to date. It's important for the committee to hear the update because the impact of the decisions as it relates to all of our curriculum reviews, and in particular, our K-5 curriculum reviews, really important and has a pretty profound impact on our teachers and our students.
Can we move on to the next leader?
This is just an overview of what the presentation is going to entail. I'm gonna give you a very brief reminder of our curriculum review process and what Phase One and Phase Two entails. And the committee is really going to walk us through some high-level details as it relates to each step, and then we'll provide the committee with an opportunity to ask any questions. Just as a reminder, the curriculum review process is aligned with our strategic plan, specifically Strategic Objective Number Two and Strategic Initiative One, which is engaging in an audit of a district-wide curriculum and conducting a curriculum review cycle. This is the work in practice, and this is what it looks like as we work to align and develop our curriculum to reflect not only our portrait of a Nishoba graduat, but truly essential components of curriculum and learning competencies for each content area in each domain in each grade span. A reminder of our curriculum review phases. I know that we had shared this with the committee last year when it was developed, uh, last December. But the curriculum review process really provides us with a systematic way to assess our curriculum that our teachers are using at each grade level in each content area in a systematic and data-informed way. And hopefully you'll see this from the committee in the presentation that follows. I'm gonna turn it over to our Curriculum Director, Laura Pagington, who's gonna provide you with an overview and a timeline of the efforts to date.
Thank you. Um, our work began in earnest last spring, as you can see at the, um, the base of this timeline here. And we began preparation through building, um, knowledge of evidence-based literacy practices. We participated in a DESI-sponsored course, paving the way to reading proficiency for all through crafting minds. And we surveyed all K-5 staff about current instructional practices and student needs. And that helped us to prepare to launch our Phase One in the fall with a curriculum committee that you'll hear more about momentarily. And, uh, we have moved on to Phase Two, and I will speak to more of that, um, later on. But our work has been guided through participation in DESI's Implement Network, which aligns curriculum review with the necessary elements to support high-quality instructional material adoption. And that is guiding our work. And we're following a timeline that will prepare us to, as we move through Phase Two, uh, make a decision about what is best for Nishoba and be prepared to implement for the fall of 2024. So that is the timeline that we are following. So we have been engaged in the essential questions of Phase One over the course of the fall. How do our current instructional practices, curricula, and materials support student learning? And what is our instructional vision? And I'm going to turn it over to two members of the committee, who will be talking about the work of the committee in Phase One this fall.
Great. Um, so the Nishoba Literacy Committee consists of twenty-three members in a variety of roles across the district, including classroom teachers, special educators, instructional literacy coaches and specialists in building and district administration. Back in June, the Department of Teaching and Learning shared the launch of the Literacy Curriculum Review Cycle and opened the application process for Nishoba staff to apply for the committee. And there was considerable interest. And the department then worked to sort through applications and work to accept applications in order to create a balanced and diverse committee. Um, balanced in the sense that it would be balanced across buildings within the district and diversity of roles within the district as well. I'll pass it on over to my colleague Kate Narita.
Thanks, Kate.
Yeah.
So we use various qualitative and quantitative data sources to gather information. We met bi-weekly, and then we looked for trends in those sources after we had crafted an instructional vision. And there were certain trends that came up from the staff and student survey and from the data that we analyzed. So one was that for the K through two, K through three teachers, and two, three there, they wanted instruction in phonics, that wanted systematic and explicit phonics instruction. And this was true within the families that were serving as well through K through two. For three through five, they wanted systematic, explicit instruction in conventions, vocabulary, and morphology. And across all grade levels, what people wanted was explicit and systematic instruction on complex text and the opportunity to synthesize and integrate ideas from various texts on the same topic. And now I'm gonna pass it over to Julie, who's gonna talk in more depth about the qualitative and the quantitative data that we use to come to these identified needs.
So our work started with really understanding the data. It was important for us to understand areas of strength and where improvements needed. We wanted the data to guide us. We explored multiple data sources, both qualitative and quantitative. Um, Laura and Laura spoke to K-5 faculty last spring and surveyed faculty to get their feedback on how the instructional materials they were using met the skills outlined in the Massachusetts Core Literacy Standards. We analyzed NCAS data for trends by subgroup. Um, and we reviewed the results from Star Reading and Star Early Literacy over the past two years. We also looked at samples of student work in small groups and teams, and most recently, we surveyed families through Thought Exchange.
The, the results of all of this work of the committee, uh, which helped us to develop an instructional vision, you'll hear more about, but also allowed us to draw some conclusions about, uh, the, the strengths and the areas of growth for literacy instruction K-5. Uh, we know that there's really strong engagement in reading through student choice and, um, in particular, the narrative writing genre. Overall, we are certainly very proud of the, the strengths of our, our students' performance. And that still means, though, we're always about continual improvement, and we want to make sure that that means all students are able to achieve their very best. So we noticed some subgroup, subgroup performance needs that we would like to see achievement gaps closed within. And, um, the continual need to ensure that evidence-based systematic explicit instructional practices for foundational skills and that our teachers and, and our students have access equitably and consistently to the materials they need. So that made sure, that made it very clear to us that, um, we were going to look at next steps, which we'll, we'll talk about shortly. Have Justice.
All right. So, um, as was mentioned, and I had shared with the committee earlier this year, we piloted a new tool called Thought Exchange with families as a means to engage families, um, by providing voice in a different way, outside of a survey or a, a in-person meeting. And so, um, the pilot of Thought Exchange, we included two slides here to represent the feedback and perspectives that we received from our families. We also included a hyperlink to some more in-depth results in the slideshow on the top right. As I had mentioned before, Thought Exchange uses some AI capacity, and you'll see reference to that if you take a look at the slideshow itself as well as the next slide. Um, but in summary, how it works. We provided families with two questions, if you can go back one slide earlier, I'm sorry. We provided two questions. One was a big question, and that was, as the district is assessing our literacy curriculum and making decisions about next steps, we want to hear from our families. What aspects of literacy instruction are most important to you as a parent guardian? That was one question. We also asked a Likert scale question, and that was, how satisfied are you with your child's literacy development? So there were two questions that comprised the Thought Exchange. The big question was the one that drove the exchange itself. Participants were asked to provide their own thoughts relative to the question and to rate the thoughts of others on a scale of one to five, with one star low agreement or low importance, and a five stars being high agreement or high importance. Thought Exchange then ranks the top thoughts by the greatest amount of participants with the highest score. The word cloud there that you see in the bottom right-hand slide reflects the most used words in the Thought Exchange. The greater the size of the word, the more it was used in the exchange. The AI technology pulled out top themes based on the frequency of words used in the exchange and pulled together a synthesis of the top four topics that emanated from the exchange by the frequency and rating of the thoughts. And that can be found on Slide Nine of the link to result highlights. The top themes, um, that our families shared with us were phonics, comprehension, reading enjoyment, and research-based. The next slide. Thought Exchange provides us with a quick overview of the main thoughts in synthesized summary form. And they really validate what it is that the committee uncovered as they explored, um, the data that they've articulated, as well as speaking with their colleagues in their buildings. And that is highlighting a strong desire for a more comprehensive literacy approach with a focus on phonics and phonemic awareness. Evidence-based curriculum that personalizes learning to the fullest extent possible for the entire learning curriculum. That is, our students who are requiring some additional support, intervention, targeted instruction for those students who demonstrate readiness for their next steps. Uh, Throughline was also, from our families, was also providing transparent updates with families about individual student progress as it relates to Renaissance learning. And the committee knows that that's something that we continue to grow our skills in, and it continues to be an area of importance for us. So in summary, uh, the data here reinforces the work of our team and helped inform the, it's the final state of our instructional vision as well as the priorities as it relates to Phase Two. So I'm gonna turn it over to Principal Zablik, who will share the newly developed, and I must say, comprehensive instructional vision for literacy here. And its true form is hyperlinked.
Exactly. Thank you. Assistant Superintendent Friend took the words right out of my mouth. If, if you look on the bottom, you can click for the complete vision. So we spent a lot of time on this. Um, and in the end, we came out with a few overarching ideas. Um, and those shaped our district-wide instructional vision for elementary literacy and ELA. The highlights include building confidence for kids as readers, writers, thinkers, and communicators. And that's across all the grade levels. Another highlight is to celebrate diversity in student background and experience and all of that that is brought to the literacy table in the classroom. Um, we want to hear from and connect with all of our students. Um, a major vision has to do with reading. Um, learning to read, acquiring the skills necessary for reading, sustaining that throughout the grade levels, focusing on those core early literacy skills was a big part of our vision. Um, and finally, to foster a love of reading and writing again throughout the years, not just in the primary grade levels. We really want to build this in, in students so that they become young adults, adults and people contributing to the world, um, and loving language. And I believe that concludes our presentation. Yes.
Okay, so, um, so just to cover again what we are looking for. So we, when we looked at the data, we looked at the data K through eight. Um, so we didn't just look at K through two or three through five. We also carried it up through eighth grade. And we were looking for trends all across from K through eight. And so one area that we struggled in, in informational text and in fictional text was the ability to synthesize information from two complex texts, okay? And then also vocabulary, and that was a little misleading. If you just look at the data, it looks like we have strong vocabulary. But when you look at the subgroups, our, um, our Latinx students in particular are, are really suffering. And so that, zero percent of the staff thought our current curriculum addressed vocabulary. So staff identified that as a problem, and we could see that it's adversely affecting students of color within our district. Um, and then in addition, again, that same idea of integrating knowledge from two texts. We don't have that in our current curriculum. And the other thing again that kept coming up was that systematic and explicit instruction, that close reading of the text. And again, that's, it came across in the NCAS and in the Star Screener, that we are struggling to integrate ideas. And so we're really looking for a program that's gonna give us access to multiple texts on the same topic that's going to increase students' vocabulary, that then they can use the vocabulary in the different texts to synthesize information, and that all students in all classes will have equitable access to the text.
So at this point, the committee, uh, at the conclusion of, uh, November or within November, we were at a juncture. And that juncture was, we had looked at those essential questions and, uh, developed our instructional vision and looked at the data, and we unanimously concluded that we needed to move to Phase Two of curriculum review and that Phase is examining other instructional resources that are out there to find what will best serve Nishoba students and align with, um, our instructional vision. And so the committee is engaged in Phase Two currently. Phase Two will take us through the winter. We are using our developed instructional vision, which aligns with the mass core literacy block that has the, uh, components at the top of the vision. We have our guardrails, our parameters, our non-negotiables. And then we're, uh, guided by the priorities, which are the, the guideposts that will help us to find the, uh, the best curriculum that will meet, uh, the students' needs in Nishoba. And our curriculum priorities align with our instructional vision. We are looking for materials that provide that explicit systematic instruction of foundational skills and opportunities to engage consistently with complex test, text, and a wide range of authentic writing with explicit instruction in writing, as well as in grade level, um, language standards. Our curriculum will be informed by universal design for learning principles, and we'll ensure that teachers have what they need to best meet the needs of, of our students. So our next steps, um, as we continue with Phase Two, are to use those established parameters and priorities to narrow down potential field, uh, potential materials to explore and to field test and to conduct site visits. Site visits where, um, where, where appropriate and field test materials in spring of 2024 with a decision, purchase, and implementation, including all the necessary professional development by the fall of 2024.
That's wonderful.
Thank you so much, Laura.
I think that that presentation is phenomenal. Uh, pretty awesome. So I want to give the community, the committee, an opportunity to ask questions if they have any. I always have one, but.
I don't want to get bogged down in the mechanics of how the AI feedback tool you use works and how it gather feedback. If I wanted to learn more about that, where could I get that information?
Can we come back around to that, Superintendent Downing?
No, we can inquire with Thought Exchange what their technical.
Because I'm just trying to understand, like, I'm looking at Slide Twelve. Because I'm just trying to understand, like, I'm looking at Slide 12, but it says lowest rated thought in the lower right-hand corner. And I didn't know how to interpret what the words in there meant with the fact that it was the lowest rated thought. Like, you know, does that mean people disagreed with that thought? Or is that people just had a low opinion of that thought? I'm just trying to understand how to interpret what this is saying.
Yep, go ahead.
I was going to say, so we piloted the tool, right, to assess its efficacy. Feel like the committee felt like it really elevated the voices of our families in a way that was different than the survey could, because it was interactive, right? Survey just being one way, and Thought Exchange being dynamic. So for that purpose, we felt it was useful. In terms of how the exchange works, and it's upvoting and downvoting essentially is at the core of how those ratings are elevated. Kind of like a restaurant review on Yelp, if you will, right? We're looking for the highest rated dots with the most amount of people. And that's how those thoughts were rated at the top. And then the lowest rated thoughts were the ones that didn't have, inversely, the opposite of the highest rating. So I think, you know, the decisions made that we will pursue Thought Exchange and bringing it on board at Mishoba, perhaps a short presentation on Thought Exchange itself might be useful. Yeah? And I'd be happy to provide that for the committee.
Any other questions of the presentation?
Hi. Yeah, I mean, that was a lot of information to absorb. And it's obvious a lot of work has been done. I think what I'm trying to get a better handle on is, like vocabulary. I made some notes on some words that came up over and over again. Vocabulary was one of the things that I think was identified through the Thought Survey. Thought Exchange, thank you. As like an area that was on the minds of parents. But I'm trying to figure out what changes are being proposed through the vision statement that would affect like vocabulary and how students are learning vocabulary in the classroom.
So our instructional vision states that students will be taught explicit systematic instruction for language. And so we're looking at curricular materials that will provide, for example, instruction embedded within units potentially for prefixes and suffixes to help students to be able to break down the language that they encounter. Content-rich, to build background knowledge for the students as they're reading through. Really rich text that is deep in the, for example, some of the curricular materials that are out there now will have really deep dives into science topics to allow students to have really specific content through that, to build knowledge. And so all of those things help to improve comprehension. And that, informed with intentional systematic instruction related to language skills can help to build vocabulary.
I think I'm picking that as an example because I have four kids. The oldest just graduated from high school. And the approach to like learning vocabulary has changed so much between her and my youngest child, who's in fifth grade now. So like when my oldest was in fifth grade, there were vocab lists that came home, and there were weekly tests. And that's not been the experience of my youngest children. So I'm wondering if this kind of review means that there's going to be a shift back towards like that? Or if that is something that's still yet to be determined?
Well, we haven't, we're in Phase Two. We are looking to find what will best meet the Mishoba's needs. So no determinations have been made. But I would say that some of the things that have been themes through Thought Exchange and themes through all of the work with the committee, with looking at student work and looking at data and looking at, and serving teachers as a whole, we're seeing consistent themes of skills and areas related to literacy that any curriculum that we choose will more specifically address than our current materials.
I just want to add one thing to the explicit systematic approach is what will allow students to be able to apply those skills to other curricular areas, such as science and social studies. So it's not just, and math, it's not just restricted to the literacy block.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So in Phase Two, one of the non-negotiable parameters was an all-green Ed Reports rating. And I'm just wondering if you could unpack what that means and how we selected to use that vendor or website or whatever as part of this process?
Ed Reports is the probably most widely-used nonprofit to assess high-quality instructional materials. I think, as I mentioned earlier, we're following DESI's Implement Network, which guides the implementation of high-quality instructional materials. And Ed Reports, I believe it was established in 2015 or around there, and has grown over the last, post-decade as a source of teachers reviewing instructional materials. And so the ratings that they provide, they have ratings on science materials, ELA materials, math materials. And those ratings are pretty intensive studies by educators from across the country with rubrics that relate to everything from usability to alignment with standards. And so those are, that's kind of like just setting the stage for these are the minimal requirements. I would say that if you look at curriculum adoptions in districts across the state, they reference Ed Reports as the baseline. And then DESI also has Curate as well, which is specific to Massachusetts and aligns curricular materials with Massachusetts standards. And those are ongoing assessments of the curriculum materials.
So just on that note, will we also adhere to Curate? Because I know that we were a little out of compliance the last, maybe a couple of years ago.
Well, I want to caution, Curate is not a compliance tool.
Oh, wrong word, sorry, wrong word. But that, to Lucy...
Just for the public understanding.
To Lucy Hawkins Specter is kind of where, I think Curate has identified it as.
Well, Curate is a tool that DESI is currently still refining because participation in Curate also requires a certain degree of participation with the vendor for their ratings. So that's growing as well. But yes, we've looked at that for guidance. Yeah.
Dana's next, go ahead.
In Phase Two or subsequent phases, are you planning collaborating with other districts to see what tools that they're using?
So the Implement Network is across the state, across, actually, every time you meet, you meet with other districts. And we will be visiting other districts with materials once we narrow down what we're looking for. And I would say that probably, I've probably spoken with close to 10-plus districts. We talk constantly about what's this district doing. Districts across the state are in a very similar place with this curriculum review right now. So there's a lot of conversations around that.
Excellent. Ah, Mike?
I'm looking at Slide number 10, the data analysis conclusions, which I very much appreciate using data to drive some of our characterizations of our own district. Specifically, I'm looking at the second bullet, which was the subgroup performance highlighting the need to address achievement gaps, which I appreciate the candor. And, you know, to be able to talk about that requires frankly a level of courage. And I'm looking back at the previous slide, and it looks like the data that you used to sort of verify that was NCAS data, assessments, baseline data, that kind of thing. I'm wondering if, and this may be like a, I'm sure it is a bigger question. I'm wondering if there has been any kind of initiative to dig into not just the data that indicates that there's an achievement gap, but really what's at the root of those gaps? And this, again, may be something that we would need to talk about more at like a broader district level, maybe something for the parking lot. But I'm just wondering if there is, either in the district or in this review, if there's been any sort of investigation as to really what lies at the core of those gaps, specifically with regards to our diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging initiatives? I mean, it's a big question, I realize.
Yeah, January 3rd, you're going to get our plan for the Equity Audit. And so that's going to be, you talked about some of the deep purpose of what an Equity Audit is for. You go into those exact things. So there's no need to put it in the parking lot because it's already on the agendas and aligned to our strategic plan. So yes. And what will come, what will come out of that audit, Mr. Karesch, are sort of the observations, the things that we're noticing and wondering about. I would really like this committee and the community to understand, getting down to sort of the deep undercurrent of the why, that's years of work, years of work. There's no like, oh, here's why you connect A to B to C, and then it tells you the why. But what the notices and wonders out of the Equity Audit findings will provide us is the roadmap to chase those questions down.
Yeah, and I would add that while it does take considerable amount of time to implement systemic changes, it doesn't make, it doesn't make the urgency any less. I mean, it is, it is an issue across the Commonwealth. But I love the fact that we're beginning to tackle it in earnest in our district.
So I know, oh, Dana, go ahead.
I just didn't know if in your plan, anywhere, there'll be, is there a plan about when you're implementing any of this? Like as with like transitioning to any new curricula? Like specifically, I'm thinking about bridges. Like when that changed over, I saw like a huge shift to my kids and like having to figure out, oh, new way of doing math now. And there was just a dip. And so especially with, you're talking about like reading fundamentals, like all of these things are huge. And I have a kindergartner and a second grader and fourth grader. And so obviously, this really concerns me that when there's another new kind of curriculum shift, there's going to be a learning curve and things are going to change. And I know that there's not really a way around it. But is that something that you guys are going to be factoring in with how you're going to be implementing this?
So in the spring, in moving to Phase Three for the following year, planning for implementation will be a major part of the focus. And already looking ahead at a variety of different ways in which we can best support teachers with professional development, planning ahead for what the needs will be for next year. It's, we're lots of plans, not knowing which particular decision we're going to land in. There are many things to still be figured out. But that's crucial and critical. But I would say that I'm very grateful to have the colleagues here of the Instructional Coaches for Literacy and their role in supporting teachers with that is critical and crucial. And I think that they've been engaged every step of the way with us. And I, we're in almost constant contact, which speaks to how important this is and why this is something that's such a priority for all of us here.
So teachers will be up and running with this this summer before, so they're able to implement it on their own?
So will...
I want to address that myself, is there's a whole process to this. And one of those, you play a role in, it's called the budget. So, you know, to say, yes, we're going to find this stuff and we're going to launch it in the fall would be circumventing this entire committee. We're not going to do that. So we will come to you at future data and what we think the rollout plan is and what participation we need in the budget to launch it. While we have a High Quality Instructional Materials grant that is helping to subsidize what would be essentially, you know, sort of a remodel of the curriculum, it's going to take some effort on our part to wherever we land to make the vision happen. So that's a to-be-determined.
Excellent. Huge puzzle here, and we appreciate all the pieces. I have one final question for you guys. I'm going to beat my drum again. So I see that you're doing a tremendous amount of work, K to five. And one of the things that I noticed is one of the problems is synthesizing texts. And so in our work, Amy and my work, we see the same exact problem, which is so fascinating. It's a higher-order thinking skill. It's something that the new NCAS is pushing. And so finding curricula that provides multiple texts on the same thing and asking the kids to identify what is shared across. So important. So it's like that transition from learning to read and reading to learn. So I guess what I'm wondering, you talked about pushing it up to grade eight. How will we continue to push it up into the highest levels where the reading is the most complex? And that's into the high school, how will that move up?
This is the K to five committee?
Well, maybe I'm asking you or Laura.
I think Laura can answer this.
You know, I'm always happy to answer any question. But Laura, I, Laura has, well, one, when we asked faculty for feedback, it wasn't just K to five faculty, it was K to 12 faculty. So all faculty has participated in providing us feedback. Laura and I are meeting with the high school English department. She's going to tell me when, I'm going to show up next week. But Laura has been in close contact with the department heads from English and Social Studies to keep them informed of the work, as well as, of course, the work at the middle school so that they are acutely aware of what's happening. And we continue to talk about those transitional phases. And so that is work that's right on the forefront because we value the input of our high school educators. And we also need to let them know all the work that's happening K to eight so that they can help lift and elevate the work in a way that's appropriate for the high school. That makes sense.
Yeah, and especially as you do the curriculum review with the Science Department, there's so much reading, so much vocabulary that's embedded in that curricula that I imagine there's a lot of transfer that the kids will bring with them up to the high school with all this amazing learning that happens down low.
Actually, we had our release curriculum work last Friday. I actually saw some examples of that in our high school and a couple of the teams, talking about synthesizing text specifically and looking at the curriculum maps in terms of what the enduring understanding and the transfer skills that they need to address.
Great. All right, everybody. Well, thank you to this amazing team.
This is very large and amazing.
We appreciate it.
I told them for weeks.
All right, everybody. So the gallery really just emptied out. So here we go. Next item for new business is on the agenda. We have the CPAC update. Unfortunately, our CPAC chair had some difficulty this evening. It's not able to join us. So we're going to move that, hopefully, the objection to the next school committee meeting, to January 3rd. Hopefully, Ms. Doug can be with us then. Next matter of new business is the Superintendent Evaluation School Committee Survey. So the chair of the Personnel Subcommittee is Sharon. She's not here right now. But my trustee Personnel Secretary can perhaps fill us in a little bit, if you will.
I can, only based on past experience.
Yes.
Because I was unable to attend the last meeting where you guys actually discussed this. But I think this is just going to be very similar to last year, where we issue a form to gauge the level of comfort and familiarity with the Superintendent Evaluation process at the formative stage. And then that will drive a bit of an in-house training. So for those of you that are new to the committee, that would be your opportunity to learn more about the training at the formative stage and the summer stage in the spring. So that will be issued probably within the next month, I would say.
So that, that will be issued probably in the next, within the next month, I would say.
Yeah, so the survey is actually ready, and we will send it out to you. The training is scheduled for January 3rd. And so we want the training to be as effective as possible, so please complete the survey, we'll email it to you. That survey will then make us alter the training if need be. Although many of us have been through this a bunch, some of us have never done it before, so.
Yeah, and like, like Mia said, if you, if you answer it honestly, and we find that there is a need or lack of a need, then we tailor the training so that it has greater relevance. It would be great if everybody was able to, to take the evaluation and then everyone answered the questions honestly.
It's like a two-minute thing.
It's not long, yeah. It's, I think there's probably seven questions or so, something like that.
Yeah. All right. All right, so we're going to move on now to the next item on our agenda, and that's the finance and operations update.
Yes, Madam Chair, I guess I'll defer to Mr. Mulcain. Should we do the capital debt assessment element first? I know Mr. Friesberg is here, and...
I'm, I'm here, so I'm good either way.
All right, so why don't we do the, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, we'll do the FY25 capital debt assessment first, and I'll turn it over to finance and operation director, Mr. Mulcain.
Do you want the capital plan first?
Capital.
Yeah. Capital plan.
Five-year capital plan presentation without objection from the committee, we're going to move that letter C upward. Mr. Friesberg, please join us. Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
He's on campus in the morning, so it's good to get him home and in bed.
Yeah, I'm usually up on the couch right now, getting nudged because I'm snoring in front of everybody, so bear with me.
Before I turn it over to Mr. Friesberg, we want to thank you for the opportunity to present the five-year capital plan as it stands currently. We posted, actually, we pasted the, the spreadsheet sections into the presentation for tonight, just for readability and just to make it easier, so we're not scrolling back and forth, up and down a Google sheet. So these are just cut and paste from, from the doc that we shared with you. Mr. Friesberg's obviously done all the heavy lifting on this and does an excellent job in developing the plan. I want to address the requests that are in there for the essentially feasibility studies, the existing conditions reports at each one of the towns. We know that there's a cost associated with that. With the services of a new house doctor, we believe it's necessary to invest in the study of the current conditions of our elementary and middle school buildings to get the most efficient plan moving forward and identify critical, critical areas of need. The cost that you'll see in the plan for those existing conditions report, we recognize that and what that, what that looks like right now. Mr. Friesberg and I met with the house doctor, which is Leroy Corporation, and met with our contact yesterday to discuss, to discuss that cost and talk about, is there a way to phase in existing conditions reports, but starting with building envelope and HBAC system potentially as a priority study first, instead of doing the full sort of A to Z conditions report for each one of those buildings? That hopefully fades in some of the cost of that moving forward. So when we receive our new quote, we'll certainly update the committee and update the towns as well when we move forward, so.
Thanks, Russ. Like Russ said, you know, that's, the numbers that came in were obviously higher than what we anticipated, you know, so taking the phased-in approach to make sure that, you know, we're hitting the critical components in the building, so there's no impact to, you know, school life going forward. So when those new numbers come in, hopefully they'll be a little more palatable, you know, we can get that going. So we can start in Lancaster. You can see is $113,000 was the initial number that we got for the existing conditions assessments. You know, when the newcomers, new numbers come in, we'll update it, you know, update it at that point. One of the other capital requests for FY25, there's two courtyards in Luther Burbank Middle School that the mortar joints and flashing are start, starting to deteriorate, and the water is penetrating the block wall, starting to come inside. So we're going to do some weatherproofing on that to make sure that the block wall is, you know, the integrity of the block wall stays intact. MRE in the, Mary Rollins in Luther Burbank in the boiler room, the, one of the boiler pumps is aging, it needs to be rebuilt. You can see the, the costs associated with that. Moving into FY26, we're going to start a floor finishing program, sanding down the hardwood floors to bare wood, repainting and resurfacing floors. Along with that, we'd like to upgrade the scoreboard in Luther Burbank Middle School. Falling into FY27, we would do the same thing. We would refinish the gym floors over at MRE and also upgrade the scoreboard there. Moving into FY28, we have some aging flooring equipment, floor care equipment that we'd like to replace, and that's indicated in the FY28. And then parking lot repairs would be in FY29. That price would be, you know, to determine because it's, you know, so far off in the future. All these five-year capitals are, would obviously change, you know, if we move forward with the existing conditions assessments, you know, it'd look drastically different based off of what those reports are going to say. Moving into Bolton. So in Bolton, you can see the existing conditions assessments for the Sawyer Building, also Emerson and the Central Office Building. Again, obviously that price is, you know, going to be different when we get the updated proposals from Leroy Corp. The Emerson Building, the classrooms and associated hallways, the flooring is at the end of its life expectancy. So we would be asking for a flooring replacement project, switching over to a resilient flooring, getting away from VCT and carpeting, and going with a vinyl tile type, which, you know, it cuts down on maintenance costs. It's more durable than what we have right now. We have water system upgrades. The well pump is about 16 years old, so that's at the end of its life expectancy. With that, we'd like to update the tank controls. So basically, that whole water system would be brand new. We did replace the booster pump station, I believe, three years ago. So once we replace those two components, we'll be in good shape there. Over at Sawyer School, back in 2018, we converted over to propane. And when they did that project, they went through Suburban Propane, which Suburban Propane supplied the tanks, and it limits us from going out to public bid to procure propane. So what we're looking to do is either, you know, purchase new tanks, we would, you know, town of Bolton would purchase the tanks, or there's potential that we could buy out the tanks from Suburban Propane at a reduced price. They have been doing that with some larger tanks because they don't want to take the tanks back there. Five years old at this point, you know, they, they wouldn't be able to refurbish them and reuse them. So there's potential that we could buy those out. So the cost of that is $54,670. And a price quote, you know, verbal price quote that I got from a propane vendor, we would potentially be getting propane at $1.74, where right now we're purchasing pro, our, our current contract is $2.26. So, you know, based off of those numbers, you know, the ROI would probably be a year, year and a half. So it'd be a pretty quick return on investment there. Big elephant in the room, there was an ask last year for air conditioning over at Sawyer. You know, heating, cooling season, like everybody knows, it seems to be getting longer and longer. It starts earlier in the spring or in the summer, and, you know, goes later into the fall. That is the only building in the district, you know, that does not have some sort of air conditioning in the classrooms. So, you know, I can imagine it gets pretty hot on that second floor up there. So that would be another ask. Pushing off into FY26, we would, you know, the, the gym floor resurfacing program, again with the new scoreboard, and also courtyard renovations. There was some work done, I don't know when the work was done, but it was quite some years ago. They did some landscaping in that courtyard area at Sawyer, you know, and it needs, needs a revamp. Trees are growing up. There was a report from Department of Public Health to remove or cut back a lot of the growth because it's trapping a lot of moisture within that area and associated classrooms that go around the courtyard. So getting some more airflow within that area would be key. Moving into FY27, the fire lock control panel, it's nearing the end of its life expectancy, so we'll be upgrading that. Moving into FY28, Sawyer exterior doors, the exterior doors would be moving into 25, 27 years old, just from, you know, natural breakdown, you know, things are starting to rot, things like that. So we've started the process of replacing all the exterior doors. And then moving into FY29, we move over here to the Emerson Building, doing the same FY25, you can see the existing conditions reports for both Hale and Center School. And then after that, we have the second phase of the interior door project at Hale. The wheelchair, wheelchair lift in the auditorium does not work. It hasn't worked for some time. We had a company come out to try to troubleshoot it. It's obsolete, they don't make parts for it anymore. So that would be one of the asks for this year, to replace that wheelchair lift. Water system upgrades at Center School, there's been a history of bacteria hits from the well water, especially this year, we've had quite a few. Anytime you, you know, we have heavy rainfall like we had this year, you have surface water that makes its way into the aquifer, and it shows up in the routine testing that we have. So because of the, the history of the bacteria hits, DEP is going to require that we put permanent chlorination or permanent disinfection in. So that would be upgrading a lot of the controls, pumps and things like that, so that way it's disinfecting the water as it's being used. Center School, another one at Center School for FY25, the booster pump, it's, some of the components of the booster pump station are getting worn out, so we're going to upgrade some of those. And by doing that, we're going to put variable frequency drives in, and that will give us some better efficiencies on that piece of equipment. Moving into FY26 for Hale, we would be replacing the fire alarm panel. And moving into FY27, we would be looking to upgrade the boiler plant at Hale. Along with that, we would be doing the hot water circulator pumps and adding VFDs to the, VFDs to those for energy savings. Moving into FY28, we would be going, looking for the hardwood floors in the gym cafeteria and the stage to be resurfaced. And then moving off into FY29, we're doing a major flooring replacement at Hale Middle One left, we have turf replacement at the high school, you know, in that FY27. We are at the 10th year, 12th year with that carpet. And the average life expectancy of a carpet is 10 to 15 years. So we think, you know, towards the opening of the new school, we're going to have to replace the, the turf, just the carpet itself, you know, not all the components of the field, so.
Any questions, Rob?
All right, go ahead, Dana.
For any of the exterior door replacements, and I guess even any of the interior ones, are there any safety concerns regarding that? I know a few of them are phased out, considered.
Yes, you know, from time to time, especially when the sun hits a lot of the doors, you know, you'll get some swelling, you know, and contraction. When we do have those issues, we do address them. If it gets to a point, we have had some doors down in Lancaster that, you know, that we're actually replacing because they're, they just, they need to be replaced for safety reasons. So if something pops up that it's, you know, it's a critical need, we take care of it right away.
Also, for the cafeteria floor finishing, can we use some of our surplus from our lunch funds, really?
Such a great idea. No, I'll certainly add that into my list of questions that I have for this day with regarding surplus, so.
Just my last one. So with the water disinfection system, are there currently like bubblers being used for drinking water at schools?
Yes, and we're, we're under temporary chlorination right now, so the water is being treated. It's just, it's on a temporary basis. They put a temporary pump in, so this will be automatic when they put all these controls in. So, yeah. The water is safe, it's being tested, it meets all the parameters from DEP, so there's no, there's no impact, you know, no health issues or health concerns.
Is there parent notification about the chlorination system being used in Center? Because I didn't know that, and I think I, obviously, I would prefer to just pack my child, you know, water from our well instead. So I just didn't know if that's something that's like common knowledge.
So we get, when we get bacteria hits from the, from the testing, DEP mandates that we, so we post it on, on the school website, and it's also on the district website under the facilities tab, so.
Water is always a hot topic in Still, isn't it?
It is.
Always a hot topic in Still.
No, it's still a hot topic. Hi, Mike. Oh. Do you want to go first?
Oh, all right. That was kind of you. So two questions. One, I think, is for Mr. Mulcain and then Mr. Friesberg, the other one, I think, is probably for you. But can we first talk a little bit about how we would go about securing the funding for these kinds of projects, given the size, scope and urgency, relative urgency of them?
Well, these are all requests that are going to be going to the member towns. The only exception would be the, the turf replacement at the high school, which is several years out. And I know we talked about the stabilization fund and budget warrant, but all of these will go to the town next. They come to school committee first, and by the regional agreement, they have to go to the town by the end of this month. And then it's up to the towns, right? I know Still has the process of going to the capital planning board. Mr. Friesberg and I typically interface with them, and they ask questions, and then things make their way to the warrant for approval of town meeting, and then we go from there.
So just FYI, the regional agreement says that all capital items under $10,000 could just be assessed to the towns. I think that as I was going through, all of these things are above $10,000.
These are all the ones that are, yeah, so there's a separate clause within the regional agreement for anything $10,000 or above. Correct.
And then question number two, I think, Rob, this one is for you. I noticed that there was only one project for the high school, and that was for the turf replacement. And I wonder if you could take this opportunity to talk about some of the things that the aging school does not have to consider, because it will be replaced in the next few years? I mean, are there, I imagine there's lots of things that, if there was no building in the works, that we would have to be considering.
Right, so, you know, a lot of the mechanicals were...
First time you got, right?
You know, obviously boilers, boiler plant, you know, anything, all the mechanicals, you know, anything that was stated in the existing conditions report, you know, you know, to build that five-year capital, we're talking millions and millions and millions of dollars. You know, so right now, we're just going to, you know, throw the mandate at things, you know, there's no cosmetic work being done at the high school, you know, it's going to be critical items only. You know, if I had a crystal ball boy, it would make things a lot easier. But, you know, we're just going to try to limp through, you know, the next three years, basically. Obviously, if something comes up that's going to impact the daily life, we're going to have to address it. But, you know, planning for that would be difficult at this point, and so.
And so to add to my other point, the regional agreement requires, because the high school is owned by the district, it's the only building that's owned by the school district, that anything in the high school's capital plan goes into our, not our operating budget, but it's a capital item that...
It's capital item that's assessed at the towns based upon high school enrollment.
So can you just speak a little bit? You said that there is a stabilization fund for the turf. Do we know how much is in it right now?
$250,000.
And we put how much in it each year?
Both of those. So I did a separate presentation to budget and warrant that I'd be happy to sort of cut down and put it in part of the budget materials moving forward, so typically...
Yeah, but you need to post some...
Yeah, typically, it's like, I think it's 100 on the upper right in front of me, but the fund was used, this came before school committee two or three years ago, when the track was resurfaced. So I think it was just about all expended at that point, what had been saved up, so now we're back to...
$250,000?
Yeah.
When does the track need to be resurfaced again?
In three years. Go ahead, Rob.
All right. I mean, I think, so we did the structural, I think it was two years ago, I think we did, we did the structural wear layer, you know, it wasn't a full resurfacing, you know, based off of wear, you know, hoping to push that out a little bit, you know, longer. You know, we're probably looking at 2030, maybe 2031.
So I mean, this, the turf resurfacing is a very large number. So, I don't know, it just feels very large to me.
It's very expensive.
So, and, and that is kind of non-negotiable, Rob, right? Like sometimes the towns or like the district, the school committee looks at these capital items and says, nah, they push it. This is probably not something that can be pushed, and so we are going to need to pay for this soon.
But that's what the stabilization fund is for.
That's very small. That's very small at this point and we might need it for the track resurfacing too.
Sorry, no, the track, well, the track doesn't need to be resurfacing because it had the top coat and please correct me if I'm wrong, Rob. But to do the turf field in three years, we will have a conversation about the stabilization account during the budgeting process.
Maybe adding to, helping.
Discussing the annual contribution to it. Yep.
Okay. That feels better. Fudge, oh, I'm sorry. You need to say this. Okay. So I think you already answered one of my questions about the process, which is you bring this to the towns and then they get to decide whether they're going to put it on the warrant or not, right? Like we don't, we don't take a vote or anything, this is just for our information, right? Okay.
It's required in the regional agreement that Rob presents to us before January one and, well, that he gives this to the town and via us. So this presentation is mandated by the regional agreement.
Okay. Something like painting lines on the driveways to the schools, whose responsibility is that and where does that fall in the budget?
So that falls under the operating, my, the facility's operating budget. Historically, we've done it every five years. We've repainted the lines every five years. I believe we did it, was it last summer, it was the summer before. So that would be considered a scheduled maintenance project where we'd go across the district and paint, you know, all of, all the lines across, you know, all the parking lots in the district.
Okay. And then my last question was regarding the existing conditions assessments. I missed the, what Ross led up to that with, but I guess I'm wondering like is that, how often are those done? When was the last time they were done? And I heard something about phasing.
Yeah, so the last time one was done was fiscal year eighteen, right? And it cost the entire district, I think somewhere around $25,000. And I mean, Mr. Freezer can speak to this more, but the, what it yielded versus what facilities lives every day in our buildings are two different stories. So we feel like we need to have a comprehensive assessment done for each of the buildings. The cost that came back that you see in the presentation, we feel like it's something that needs to be phased in. So we're asking our house doctor that does the engineering services for this type of work to say, you know, can we phase in the study? Can we look at just the building envelope and the HDAC study first and then talk about flooring, walls, whatever else it may be to reduce some of that cost to the town? We do not need the extent and breadth and scope of the facilities, or excuse me, the assessment that was done as part of the feasibility study at the high school. We don't need that level of hundreds and hundreds of pages because we don't need every, everything looked at right now. What we're saying is let's start with the building envelope study, identify priority areas through that to move forward and adjust our capital plan. Because it doesn't matter what we do in the building, if something's going to leak on it, it gets ruined. So let's talk about our rooms and our windows and things like that first.
So Ross, the number that you put in here for the existing conditions, is that large number?
It's the, the non-phased in first, first quote that we received, correct.
So it could be much less than that.
We just met with them yesterday, so we don't have something back yet.
Thank you. Any other questions?
My only question was regarding the Mayor Rollinson Luther Riverback campus, this planned for resurfacing the parking lot in, oh, you haven't got, you have it to be determined. Okay, I'm sorry. On that particular note, Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, the town of Lancaster granted an easement to National Grid for the placement of a, installation of a charging station in the parking lot. When has National Grid indicated that they're going to initiate the construction of that?
So after Mr. Pacheco left, I have not heard one word about that. That was something that he spearheaded. I'm not even sure if, you know, just knows about that project. I think, you know, we could follow, Rob and I could follow up there.
Oh, I don't, I, I don't think, because you got it, I'm sorry, I thought it was fiscal year twenty-seven, but you have it to be determined as to when the parking lot is resurfaced because.
Not when, but the amount. It's in twenty-nine.
What? I'm, I'm sorry, what was that?
It's in fiscal year twenty-nine is when they think.
Oh, you're thinking, oh, you do it, you think it's going to be done in fiscal year twenty-nine?
Resurfacing the parking lot.
Oh, okay.
Which is going on the amount.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Go ahead, John.
I'm wondering, would it be helpful to know how long we think these expenditures will last for these things? And so contextualizing this data, I don't know if that's possible to add to this in future versions?
That'll come out with the existing conditions assessments. That's part of that report. It'll give life expectancies for all of that, all that stuff, what we currently have in the building and also when we upgrade to new equipment, it'll give like life expectancies of all that.
So will that report look at the planned expenditures and the stuff?
They'll, yeah, they'll have, they'll come up with costs, the cost for each one of those projects, which, you know, like we talked about, the one that was, the report that was done back in 2018, it was essentially a home inspection of steroids. You know, it wasn't very comprehensive. It was, you know, very surface, you know, it was just on the surface. You know, and a lot of the things that were in those reports, you know, I've gone back to, you know, to help build the, the five-year capital and, you know, bringing in industry professionals, you know, to look at some of those things and they indicated that there wasn't an issue with some of those things. So there wasn't a lot of validity to it, I guess. So that's, you know, kind of we went back to the jury board and, you know, said we're going to do something a little bit more, you know, that's a little more deeper in thought, so.
So as we refrain from investing in capital at the high school, as we try to eke out the like life of our existing equipment, should we reasonably expect higher operating costs at the high school over the next few years? Is that going to appear in the budget?
Well, you'll, you'll see, you'll see higher utility cost when we come back for the, the budget here and you're going to see increase in utilities, especially across for electricity. We're under new contract for our electricity for the kilowatt hours going from nine cents to twelve cents. So you're going to see a significant increase there, not only for the kilowatt hour, but also the transmission. You know, so you'll see things like that. You know, like I said, we're going to try to limp through for the next three years, you know, not have to, hopefully not have to make any major repairs at the high school.
I think your question's specific to the efficiency of the units that we have there right now, so.
I'm just thinking about, you know, so, you know, with the boiler might have whatever expected life and so we're trying to extend it, but so maybe instead of the whole boiler breaking down, part breaks down and we have to replace and so that's going to cost more than if we had to replace the boiler for, so that kind of thing.
Yeah, so we actually, when we put the oil tank in at the high school back in 2019, we upgraded one of the burners on the boiler. So that, that's fairly new. And then with the replacement of the boilers down at Lancaster, we actually took the best burner out of the two and we saved that. So that way, if something happens to the older boiler, it's, it's going to be a quick swap out. So, you know, we try to do that where we have parts in other buildings and we can use them other places, you know, we try to do that to save money.
I didn't mean to pick on the boiler per se, it was just, it's crazy, right? So just as you're budgeting next year, since you're not investing in capital, you might want to consider a little bit more money in the operating expense line to account for possible things along those lines.
Take that on air, Mr. Powell, thank you.
Mr. Freezer, part-time magician, thanks. If there are no other questions, we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, everybody, keep it ongoing. This has been what we call the Mr. Mulcaren Show. We're going to head over to the EDPD presentation.
Absolutely.
All right.
So this was pushed for a previous agenda and I took some time to sort of building some updates and some changes to it. So I appreciate the opportunity to present this. It's essentially an overview of what an excess and deficiency fund is for us and given that this has been used annually as an offset to the budget, we believe doing this now and providing a short overview made sense, given that there'll likely be discussion of the E and D fund when we get to the budget season formally. And also to provide an update on the status of our latest E and D certification. So excess and deficiency, so E and D in basics that all regional school districts shall maintain it as a fund. And I want to make sure that I, I continue to use the word fund. I think there's been some, you know, confusion and I think even in the way that I was labeling things and had spent on the past is to say, you know, oh, the FY twenty E and D can be used for the FY twenty-two budget. I think it's important to think of it as a static fund and money comes into the fund annually and then money can also be drawn out of the fund annually. So I'll get to more of that in a little bit. So at the end of every year, every fiscal year, any surplus or deficit in the fund has to be closed, excuse me, in the general fund would have to be closed, the excess and deficiency fund. So surplus in the operating, for example. We have to submit this documentation to the Department of Revenue so that the balance is reviewed and certified by the Department of Revenue and the board of accounters there. Any, and these are all statutory, a regional school committee may use all or part of the certified balance in the excess and deficiency fund as a revenue source for its proposed budget. If the balance is 5% of the current year's budget, we would have to turn that money back to the towns and obviously we're not there and I don't think we've been there in recent history, but that's certainly part of the statute. And the excess and deficiency funds may be expended only if they're included in the approved budget. And then any additional expenditure out of that during a school year would have to be approved from the school committee. As an administration, we wouldn't be able to just use money from that for whatever our, we feel like we'd have to bring that back to the school committee to go beyond what we're going to budget as an approved expenditure. So a little bit about our process. So we really begin the thought about closing the fiscal year really in April and in May. And then we start doing all of our closing entries after the end of June, so into the summer. And it takes really several months to get everything closed up. Then we take all of our fiscal reports, we give them to our auditors for what they ask for. They take that information and they help create the balance sheet and some other documents that get submitted. And we submit those to the Department of Revenue through their gateway. Simultaneously, Vicki Chartier, who's our treasurer, has a series of reports that she also has to submit as a treasurer to the Department of Revenue. So then over course of months, depending upon where we are in the queue, the fund, through the balance sheet and other documents are reviewed and that fund will get certified at a certain amount based upon what the reviewers of the Department of Revenue see in their, for surplus liabilities, things like that. But essentially, we have a good idea of what we're submitting ahead of time. So what actually goes into the fund? The basic components are any fund balance from the previous year. So if you don't expend all of your E and D balance, you have a balance, or fund, you have a balance in there that would start your E and D fund. Then any operational budget surplus, like is in statute, go into the excess and deficiency fund and then revenue results as well. So if you have, have any revenue that comes in higher than you budgeted, that would also go into that. So here's our current E and D submission using the same sort of thought process. Our balance certified at approximately 1.5 last time and we used 1.2 in the operating budget as an offset, leaving approximately $300,000 as a balance. Then as you remember, when I presented the end of the year report from the operating budget, we had a surplus of approximately 1.6 million dollars. That also goes into the E and D fund. And then finally, the revenue that I also presented last time, where we had some significant revenue come in, our investment income and then also Medicaid, all that additional revenue that we did not use as part of the operating budget would go in there as well. Which are, puts our current E and D submission for certification at approximately about 2.3 million, which is, going back to that initial slide on the basics where we can't really go over 5%, we're at about 3.5% right now, if it gets certified at that amount. But that's a submission and approximation. So next steps, we're going to continue to update the committee on the submission and when we hear back from the Department of Revenue, it's likely that they may ask us to look at something. Last year, I know that I worked with our auditors mid-year because of the ban on high school feasibility study, they wanted it shown differently on the statement indebtedness and that's not atypical. I asked our auditors that sometimes there's some discussion back and forth between districts and auditors and the Department of Revenue. We will certainly discuss during the creation of our FY twenty-five budget, how we're going to use the E and D fund and then create expanded information on E and D within our budget book and also Transparency Center. Superintendent Downing and I share a goal regarding the Transparency Center. So that's it. Any questions for me?
That was super clear.
Very concise. Thanks, Ross. Any questions? All right, yeah, Mike.
Two questions. Number one, let's just say hypothetically, someone wanted to check in on the progress of expected surpluses. How would someone find that out? At the cost level, I'm sorry.
Expected surpluses, well, it's certainly just be in the operating budget reports each month.
Month to month.
Yeah.
And the other one, faded away, I don't know what happened to it.
Yeah, poof. Go ahead, Scott.
So I don't have a question about the presentation per se, it's more about the E and D in general. So up at the E and W committee, we are having some conversations about what our philosophy and approach should be towards E and D. At some point, should the whole committee be having some conversation along those lines? And if so, when and how?
So the budget and warrant subcommittee can, through their report, bring to the committee a potential agenda item. So if you guys decide at the committee level, there's something you want to bring to the full committee, bring it to us during that report and talk and lot it or just throw it on the next agenda or Kirk and I can talk about, you know, because obviously it's time sensitive and our next few, couple of months are really packed. But in April, you know, we got tons of time. So nothing going on in April.
This is a critically important mechanism for regional school districts, so I think that would very much be warranted. So make sure that I'm in attendance for that E and W meeting as well.
Warranted and budget warranted.
Yeah.
I remember my question. Let's say that we, we utilized 1 million from E and D as an offset. And I know that I've asked you this before, but how do we make predictions in terms of how much that we want to utilize? We don't want to over-budget. We don't want to over-budget and then just bring it back. So how do we know, how do we find that balance between budgeting enough but not over-budgeting? Does that make sense?
So relative to what's actually going to be certified?
Right.
Correct. So I think having, number one, doing something like this, so having a good understanding of what was submitted, to understand sort of ballpark where we'd be at for our E and D when it comes back. I think throughout the, the budget process, having the discussion with regards to sort of like philosophy and practice around use of E and D and then also considering the idea that this is sort of one time, right? Because next year or the year after that or the year after that, it could be a very different picture of what's in our E and D based on what happens during a fiscal year. So I think those are the major components. As far as the idea of you don't want to over-extend in budget planning, how much the offset would be, I think that's the very conversation that needs to happen during budget season.
I'll just remind the committee and for those that weren't on the committee at that time, when we built the budget, that was my first year, so that would have been the FY twenty-three budget, we submitted, and we're submitted at 1.21 million and we applied 1.2 million to the budget that particular year. So we took that down to the bare bones. And so then we are working to build up that E and D account because it's, I think, is again, a conversation for budget and warrant, I think, to drill down on. We need that account to be healthy for all the safety protections that happen when, for unpredictable forces.
This also triggers our bond rating. This has an impact on our bond rating as well. So a 3.5% number is a good thing for our bond rating.
Yes.
So that's great.
Yes. Our health trajectory is going up.
All right.
But it's capped, so.
Right.
It's capped. Correct.
All right, guys, so let's keep this bus rolling and Ross, you can guide us to your next topic here.
Thank you. So this is different than the capital.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Sorry. The attachment for this doesn't work.
Ah. It opened for me.
I can open it. I get access denied. Are you on the, what? Are you connected to the network?
Not on the list.
So anticipation of our FY twenty-five budget workshop is coming up with the school committee next month. This evening, I'm presenting to you our capital depth assessment for fiscal year twenty-five. It's usually part of the budget workshop and it still will be there, but given a couple of things, Superintendent Downing and I felt like it was important to bring this and pull it outside of the budget workshop as it's not part of the operating. it outside of the budget workshop, as it's not part of the operating budget, it's decoupled from that. Our operating budget is essentially, what is the cost to run the educational program for our schools? The debt assessment does go to the towns at the same time and through the regional agreement, but also is what are our payments for our capital debt versus what it's a cost to run the school district for the following year. So, we felt like it was important to decouple that a little bit. We'll still obviously talk about it, it'll be part of it, you'll see it. But the other part of it is we wanna make sure that we provide the town administrators the capital debt assessment figures a little bit ahead of time this year. We know that there's a different impact on taxpayers with our first bonding of the high school, so we felt like we can get ahead of this a little bit earlier. We feel like that's good partnership with our member towns and gets them the ability to start looking at numbers early as well. So, here's the regional agreement language. I won't read it specifically. I know the regional agreement's been referenced several times tonight, but essentially, the debt service on anything for the high school is a portion based on the town's student enrollment on October 1. So, here it is in both the enrollment numbers, but also the percentage of enrollment at the high school, because that's ultimately what drives the assessment for capital debt costs. So, as you can see here, we have really, we have four. Capital debt payments coming up for FY25. The high school renovation that was done several years ago, that was essentially phased out just about, because we're gonna be building a new high school, that will come off the books in FY25. So, this is the last payment on the renovation that was done 20 years ago or so, which is good timing. So, you can see the payment there, both with the principal and interest. I'm gonna make, I'll get to it, a separate note to make. The high school track and field that we spoke a little bit about today, that, that bond is gonna be finished in FY28, and if you look to Mr. Fries' presentation, there's a little bit of correlation there. It's sort of like, once the original is paid for, we're sort of getting close to the time where we need to replace the turf. So, I think there's some correlation in timing there, but you can also think about, that's also about the time we're gonna be finished with the high school. So, if you look at those two payments together, we're close to, you know, half a million dollars that's gonna be coming off of our capital debt as we continue to build up our debt payments for the new high school. The Leach Field and Fuel Stores, that's actually a bond anticipatory note. We need to pay a certain percentage principal each year to continue to roll that. So, I think that's got about probably six years of payments worth. I'll have to confirm that with, this is Chartier, but we do have some, a longer payment ahead on that. And then, the high school new construction, my apologies if you opened the presentation prior to this evening. I had some of the interest in the principal payment, so this is the correct version, and it's now posted. So, because this is a brand-new bond, we only have a $5,000 principal payment, but obviously, the interest is much higher. That interest payment on, that interest payment on just that first bond will actually dip in year two a little bit. It's just the mechanism, it's just the way bonds are structured. But essentially, our capital debt subtotal comes out to about 2.6 million for FY25. We've always used an offset from the athletic revolving, so they're bringing in gate receipts and things like that, and we've always used $25,000 to help offset. Obviously, that's more targeted to the track and field renovation than anything else, but in the big picture, it comes off of, that is an offset. So, really, our capital debt total for next year is essentially 2.66 million for FY25. So, using the percentages that I presented before, based on the enrollment at the high school on October 1 of this year, these are the capital debt assessments that would go out to the town at the same time as our operating budget assessments. Obviously, there's an increase on these, we know that, we anticipated it was coming. I think we did a good job in bonding to get us to the initial stages of construction, and we'll see what happens with the markets the Fed met today and continue to keep rates where they are, but we'll be going back out to the bond market next year to continue payments on construction. And so, I'll be back here again at this time next year giving you an update on capital debt assessment, what it looks like without the old renovation bond on there, and then obviously, what it looks like with the second bond for high school construction baked in as well.
Excellent. Thanks, Ross, for that. Any questions on the capital debt assessment? Diane?
It is. Go.
Okay.
I like how this was decoupled and kind of has its own time to get an explanation. I think it would be really helpful for members, like, during the building project process, I get so many questions about when these debts are falling off the books, that I think that would be helpful to add to the presentation, to just have, like, when, just add a column, like.
We can add maturity date.
Okay. And then, it would just serve as a useful reference for all of us, and, you know, having it in one place. The percentages there, do you have a sense of how, like, when I look at them, just because I studied the numbers so much going for the building project, I think that the Bolton's percentage went down? It did?
Yeah, Bolton and Capitol pretty level last year. This is what I forecasted in the committee when I was, did the enrollment presentation.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, I think that the agenda next takes us to, excuse me. A lot of so, deeper learning grant approval. And so, I'm gonna turn to Amy and ask her for a motion.
I move to accept the deeper learning implementation grant, DSE Fund Code 105 for expenditure as presented in accordance with school committee policy DD.
I'll second that. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Excellent, that's unanimous. We will now move to our next item, and that is a donation to the Hale Middle School. Do you have a motion for that?
I move to accept the donation for $600 to Hale Middle School from an anonymous parent to help provide financial assistance for eighth-grade Washington DC trip.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Now, unanimous again. And the last item there, the Florence or donation approval, it has come to our attention, and it's not actually necessary.
Yes, we're gonna withdraw that one.
Yeah. Because it does not need to come before us. The last item on the agenda, before we get to subcommittees, is the adoption of the school committee DEIB statement, which Alita is projecting. We've seen this before, it was in the materials for the next, I mean, for the last meeting. I've removed the parenthetical pieces, and I'm looking for a motion to adopt. Okay.
I move to adopt the DEIB statement as presented.
I'll second that. Discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous as well. Thank you. Alita, maybe you and I can touch base about how this can live on the website, or where did you live on the website? Awesome. And now, on to subcommittee reports. We are really just coming under time right now. Fantastic. Lots of time for subcommittee reports. Let's start with Budget and Warrant.
Budget and Warrant has not met since our last meeting. We're planning on meeting next Tuesday, the 19th. But just to speak to the E and D presentation, I have reached out to NASC to see if we can get some in-service training about it, and if there are resources that they can provide. And I haven't heard back yet, but I'm sort of waiting on Tracy. So, when I hear back, we can either bring that to Budget and Warrant and potentially back to the broader committee.
Awesome. Thank you. Sharon's not here for communication, but does anybody else on that subcommittee want to speak to the primary work?
It's just me. So, we're continuing to work on the manual and making updates to it, adding links. We've reached out to Dorothy for a few clarifications about things, and right now, basically, what we have to get through at this point is the appendices, which, there's a lot of that. So, we kinda have, that's where we're at now. We're tackling that last part of it. So, our plan is to have to you by February, and we should be on track with it.
Amazing. Thanks, guys. Building Committee?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Before I get to the report, I just wanna preface what I have to say by saying that with regards to the high school building project, one of the things that the subcommittee, the construction management subcommittee looked at in hiring Consigli Construction, which is our now, our construction manager, is what, we were very taken with their expertise and their experience in geothermal technology in that regard. The Building Committee met on November 30, and the major item we addressed at that time was the installation of the geothermal heating system for the new high school. It was originally proposed that we would be placing approximately 140, what they call, single YouTube wells, sited at the front of the high school property. Steve Johnson from Consigli Construction was at our meeting, and he and his staff have reviewed the initial plans and proposed an alternate plan, where they're looking to place what they call 72 quad-loop wells, and they wanna site those where current test cords are located. The difference in not only reduction in number of wells to be drilled, but they're looking to use fewer wells to a deeper depth. The original plan was for a 500-foot well, or 500-foot wells. They're proposing 72 800-foot wells in a quad-loop system. In order to do this, the committee did have to authorize the expenditure of $100,000 for a new test well to check the thermal conductivity of that location. However, Mr. Johnson, maybe ambitiously, maybe not, has suggested to the Building Committee that the savings of the district could equal approximately $1.4 million. So, the Building Committee did approve that request, so they're are gonna look to alter the original geothermal plant, geothermal installation plan, which, to the betterment of our district, if this outplans that pays out, excuse me, would then allow the installation, the construction to begin in June as opposed to March. And this was a big boon for our district, because it would be less interference for the school district, for the high school, and would allow that work to commence after classes are completed for the school year. And I think that's basically about it. Madam Chairman, I know the superintendent wants to speak on this, but we're meeting again next Thursday, the 21st.
There's just one little point to add on to that, the benefit of putting the geothermal well in the field in this ultimate location takes away the complexity of the development and the geothermal field being in the same location. So, with it in separate locations, running the risk of doing damage to the geothermal well when you're doing utility work is then removed.
This doesn't impact the schedule?
No, no.
No.
That's, I think, what most people care about. So, that money.
I think just add, I think the one thing is, is that it is a bit of a gamble, because we don't know if that location will provide the, they call the thermo connectivity that's necessary for the geothermal system. But based on what our consultants have advised, they think that the expectation, or, yeah, the expectation's rather high, that it will pan out. So, we're gonna spend $100,000, $104,000, I think, on this, but hopefully, fingers crossed, it will work.
Thanks, Joe. On to Personnel, there's really nothing to share, other than please be on the lookout for that survey. And Policy?
We're meeting next week. We're gonna be talking about our edits to the Policy D stuff, so that that could be ready for the next meeting. We're continuing to talk about the new policy for parent communication, and then there's the new policies on technology and school lunch that we'll be looking into.
Awesome. Thank you. Audit Advisory?
No report, we'll meet tomorrow.
Awesome. Thanks for keeping on with that. DeRJ, Jackie?
Yep, their next scheduled meeting is on Tuesday, December 19, at 7:30. Continued work in the areas of the decision-making tool for the school committee to access the various subcommittees' calendar work and informing webpage and equity audit.
Awesome. CPAC, Karen is not present, so we'll move right to, is there anything that OMAC needs to share up? All right, then you guys are gonna kind of stay on the radar a little bit. That's fine. Items for next agenda, anything pressing that you guys want addressed? Like, planning calendars there?
Do we need to add an agenda item about the calendar for regarding the elections?
Oh, so, let Kirk and I touch base upon the public comment this evening, and we can devise a plan to bring to the committee.
Yeah, we're gonna need to review the calendar, without question. So, I don't think it will be January 3. It will be later. So, examine some of the things we gotta.
Alita, could you just throw that into the parking lot, so we don't forget who we got as the school calendar? Hey, guys, as always, if there's anything else, just shoot me an email, and I will put on my list of things. We are going to move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
I win.
Oh, my gosh.